Welcome, trustee. Welcome everybody back. I hope everybody survived okay. The reason I'm in the sweater is because my office has no heat and so this is the heaven. Or is this hell?
It's heaven.
It's heaven. It's heaven. It's very warm. I hope everyone did okay. So we're going to proceed with the action items. Number one A, approval in minutes of June fourth, two thousand and twelve meeting.
So moved.
Can I have a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, substantial, the motion carries. Item number one B, policy calendar number one B one, School of Professional Studies, BS in Nursing.
Okay, this is a fully online bachelor's compleaters, completer program which is designed for people who are already registered nurses, who have the associate's degree, and who wish now to obtain their baccalaureate degree. The program addresses several systemic issues related to nursing education. First, it responds to the call from professional organizations in the healthcare field for more baccalaureate educated nurses. Second, this program, which is comprised of evidence-based nursing courses as well as traditional liberal arts general education courses, will increase the number of baccalaureate seats available at CUNY to RNs, many of whom are graduates from CUNY's associate degree programs in nursing. Finally, the asynchronous online format will simplify the degree completion process for the nurses, many of whom work rotating shifts and have family responsibilities.
Any questions, discussions?
Yes.
Karen?
First, I move the item.
Second?
Second by trustee DiMartino.
This, I support this. I have one question after I had reviewed this over the weekend. I did some Google searching and for online degree programs. And what I find interesting is that so many of them provide for a proctored final exam for each course. And in fact, the Sunday New York Times Education Supplement had this whole article on MOOCs, massive online.
Open.
Open courses. And they referred to some of the MOOCs using Pearson for proctor final exams. And they all address the issue. And here, there's a section on the integrity, and this isn't specifically or only this program, but all online programs at SPS and elsewhere. I really think from my reading, there are always that we should consider ensuring that the credits and the diplomas that we give really truly certify that that student, that individual, has learned the skills and has acquired the knowledge. So what they do at many places, including the college where our current interim vice president for student affairs at John Jay came from four years, he told me that every single online course there in South North Carolina, students taking online courses either take their final exam on the campus if they live close enough, or they take it at a center. If they live within sixty-five miles, they have to come to campus. If they live further, they take it at one of a whole range of centers where if there is a fee, the student has to pay the fee. And Pearson's is mentioned in the Sunday Times article as charging, I think it was sixty-five or seventy-five dollars. But I'd like us to consider that because there's so much cheating going on where there's proctored exams. You know, it's worrisome what might be going on where there's no proctored, proctoring at all. I mean, we wouldn't have at our campuses here final exams where no one was in the room proctoring. We wouldn't just open a room to a thousand students and leave. But that's what we're doing with our online.
I think you're raising some good points. Do, SPS, do you want to, okay, we have the dean and the associate dean here from SPS. Maybe they want to address the integrity issue? Yeah, you can just sit here.
Hi, I'm John Mogalescu. And one of the hats I wear at the university is the dean of the School of Professional Studies. I'm joined by George Adi, our chief academic officer and associate dean of academic affairs. And George also is director of instructional technology for the university. And so is well versed to answer Karen's question, and I'm going to just ask him to do that.
Hi.
Hi, Karen.
There are several ways of answering this. First of all, although I appreciate the concern, the reference to MOOCs in particular makes me want to indicate that there are different kinds of online instruction. And what we do is very different from the hundred and thousand.
Yes, of course.
Registrant course that does have real academic integrity issues. All the courses at SPS, all the online courses are capped at twenty-five, and there's a lot of intimacy and work between instructors and students that forms a basis for sort of verifying that the student's work is their own, as does the fact that all of this work happens through Blackboard, which goes through the portal and the triangular verification of student identity. Beyond that, I would also say that increasingly what we are doing in the online courses is prizing capstone experiences that are not exams but are in fact research projects and collaborative ventures of one kind or another, because increasingly it's not what you know. If you don't know what, you can Google it, but what you can do with what you find out. And all that notwithstanding, there are very good ways of securing tests and making sure that academic integrity is occurring online. At the same time, we do, in some cases, actually proctor, use proctored exams. And this includes for our distance students, we have arrangements with a number of institutions elsewhere. It's a very large consortium of especially public universities offering online instruction. So we do, it's not a single or simple answer, but we do take enormous precautions. Would say one last thing, which is there recently was several studies, and I would be glad to send them on, indicating that cheating is actually much higher in classroom-based courses than it is in online courses.
Really?
Yes.
Yes. One of the arguments is that it's more difficult to determine cheating online and therefore, and it's easy to determine cheating in the classroom, your eyes are on the people. So I question the, you know, the study, but.
Well, the example you used, the MOOCs in particular, they discovered that whole cohorts were in fact submitting identical answers, and that's very easy to determine online. Plagiarism and things like that are actually easier, if they are in fact easier to do or presumably to get away with, they're much more easy to track.
Well, I don't want, I'm not concerned with catching cheating, I'm concerned with deterring cheating.
I understand.
I don't want this environment where students feel they can cheat and then they get caught. I don't, I don't want that. I'm sorry I raised MOOCs because it's really, it's just that I had just read the article. But you probably, most of us have probably read the Chronicle of Higher Education article, the shadow scholar, and now he has a book.
Right.
On how he made a living being all these different people, including for online courses.
And in class courses.
And in class courses. I'm glad to know that you do do some proctoring. I would think for a nursing degree especially, but that's not mentioned here at all in terms of academic integrity. There's no mention of proctoring. And the reason I'm particularly concerned about this is whatever SPS does in terms of online education, it's cited by the campuses as, well, SPS doesn't do proctored final exams, therefore, we don't have to do them at our campus, though many of the faculty want to have proctored exams. So you, since the only fully online, except for a master's in John Jay, that I know of, the only fully online programs are at SPS, you're, you know, really playing a critical role at, for the entire university, for all the faculty, for all the programs, for all the policies about online education. And I'd really, really ask you to consider, what's the downside of having proctored exams?
The, the.
Assuming there's an exam.
The, two issues here. One is the issue of sort of the instructor's self-determination of how grades are evaluated, including whether or not there are final exams. We would not want to standardize courses to a point where everybody has, for instance, a standard test they have to take and a standard way of taking it. And there are opportunities to randomize and otherwise reduce the possibility of online cheating. The, for exams in particular. That said, you know, there are times when if an instructor feels that that is necessary, then we have in fact offered proctored exams both here and at various sites for our distance education students. In an extreme case, the worst that we would have to do is make sure that a public notary was compensated for doing individual proctoring.
Okay, can we move on the item? Since you made the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, nay, substantial? Item number one B two, Baruch College, MS in Financial Risk Management.
All right. Baruch College seeks to diversify its graduate business offerings by launching a highly quantitative program that will prepare graduates both to identify risk and to implement risk management programs in their firms. This program will also prepare graduates to pass the professional certification tests of the Global Association of Risk Professionals, the leading professional financial risk management association. Baruch College estimates that this program will generate revenue for the college as early as its first year of operation. Okay.
Discussions? Questions? Now may I have a motion to move this item?
So moved.
Second by anybody? All those in favor, please say aye. Nay, substantial? Item number one B three, College of Staten Island.
All right. This is a doctor of nursing practice degree. With this proposed doctoral degree in nursing, the College of Staten Island's Department of Nursing seeks to meet the anticipated requirement by their accrediting organization, which is the American Association of Colleges of Nursing, to make the doctor of nursing practice a requirement for entry to advanced practice nursing. The evidence-based curriculum in this eighty-seven credit program will include diagnosis and treatment of illness or health conditions, advocacy for underserved and culturally diverse individuals and groups, decision-making related to personal health, and coordination of services, among other topics. The DNP is a professional or clinical doctoral degree. It prepares students for advanced practice, including leadership positions in practice settings. This is in contrast to the PhD, which is a research-based degree. The proposed doctor of nursing practice program will be the second professional doctorate to be approved for the College of Staten Island. The doctor of physical therapy program was approved for Staten Island by the board in the last academic year. The College of Staten Island is confident that its own undergraduate degree in nursing and other programs in the area will be natural feeders for the new DNP. The revenue generated by this program will more than offset the cost of running the program.
Okay.
So moved.
So moved. Second? All those in favor, please say aye. Nay, substantial? Motion carries. Number item one B, okay, sorry. Sorry, I'm sorry.
I don't think we wanted to say anything.
One B four, Principal Community College, York College, dual and joint degree program.
Yeah, this is a dual joint program, AAS and BS in nursing. As mentioned with regard to the first action item today, which was the online RN to BS degree for the School of Professional Studies, local and national hiring trends in the nursing profession demand increased educational capacity at the baccalaureate level. The proposed dual joint program, which is part of a CUNY-wide initiative to increase the numbers of students who progress from an associate's to a bachelor's degree in nursing, provides another path for progression of RN nursing graduates into and through the upper division of a baccalaureate program, allowing these graduates to be recruited for more competitive positions or to pursue graduate-level credentials. The term dual means that students will receive two degrees, and the term joint means that two institutions are involved. So students in this program will receive two degrees in a program involving two institutions. More specifically in this case, students in Queensborough's Associate Degree Nursing Program who are doing well will be recruited for this dual joint program. Once they enter the dual joint program, and provided they maintain the required academic standards, they will be guaranteed admission to York's baccalaureate nursing program with seamless transfer of their credits.
Okay. Have a motion to move this item?
So moved.
Okay, second again?
Second.
Discussions?
Yeah.
I have a question.
Sure.
So you said the students who are in good academic, they will have like seamless without losing any credits?
Right.
What about the students who are not in good academic?
The students who, well, if they continue to satisfy the educational requirements at Queensborough, then they would finish out the associate's degree at Queensborough. But they would not be permitted to move on to the baccalaureate. Yes.
So they have to separately apply for the program after completing their associate's?
After they complete their associate's, then they would need to separately apply to a bac, any baccalaureate program if they could get in at that point. Yeah.
Any other questions? No? Can I move this item?
So moved.
All those in favor, please? Please say aye. Nay, substantial? Motion carries. Item number one B five, Borough Manhattan Community College.
Okay, this is a action item to close the Cooperative Education Department. BMCC intends to maintain its internship program that has been conducted by the faculty in their cooperative education department. However, the program's status as an academic department contravenes the current practice of having departments organized according to academic disciplines. With the closure of the Cooperative Education Department, faculty members who are currently in this department will be placed in academic departments according to their discipline, which are, the disciplines are accounting or business management. Tying the work of these faculty more closely to their disciplines will allow BMCC to enhance the quality of the student internships that these faculty supervise. Although the BMCC governance structure does not require a faculty vote for the closing of a department, the present action follows consultation with relevant departments and individual faculty, as well as with the BMCC Academic Senate. No objections were raised by the members of any constituency.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, second, okay. Discussions? Any more discussions? Okay, let me, let's move to side, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, substantial? Motion carries. Number item one B six, Borough Manhattan Community College, AS in GIS.
Okay, this is an AS in Geographic Information Science, which is a rapidly expanding field. The U.S. Department of Labor estimates that jobs in this area are growing at an annual rate of almost thirty-five percent. The proposed degree will prepare students to capture, manage, analyze, and display spatial information, including the creation of cartographic output. A few of the most common job titles for GIS professionals include GIS technician, GIS drafter, field data technician, GIS coordinator, GIS specialist, GIS analyst, application system developer, and GIS database administrator. The proposed degree will prepare graduates not only for entry-level employment in private industries and governmental agencies, but also for transfer to baccalaureate programs. An articulation agreement between the proposed program and the BA in geography at Hunter College has been signed.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All right. This is such an important field because a while ago, ASR had trouble hiring their own employees for this field, so let alone the industry needs. So this is a badly needed, especially with hurricanes.
It sounds like a great major.
Yes.
That's wonderful.
No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, substantial? Motion carries. Okay. Agenda, I don't know, oh, that's right, we have an addendum to number seven, which is a City College abolition of the Department of Cell Biology and Anatomy.
Right. This is in the Sophie Davis School of Biomedical Education. This action item was submitted to the Office of Academic Affairs after the CAPRA agenda had been closed and was admitted as an addendum in view of the time-sensitive nature of the proposed action. Following the recommendations of a two thousand and eleven external review, the Sophie Davis School of Medicine is merging two small academic departments in order to more effectively utilize resources and improve instruction. Faculty members from the existing Department of Cell Biology and Anatomy will be transferred to the Department of Microbiology and Immunology. This action has been approved by the executive faculty of the Sophie Davis School of Biomedical Education in accordance with City College's governance plan.
So moved.
Second? Any questions? No? All those in favor, please say aye. Nay, substantial? Okay. Now it's item number two, agenda, informational items. Graduate School of Journalism.
Okay, this is concerns the Center for Community and Ethnic Media at the Graduate School of Journalism. According to standard CUNY procedures, proposals for centers are presented to CAPRA for information purposes only and are formally approved via the Chancellor's University Report. The trustees were provided information on the current item in the September two thousand and twelve letter that I sent you in lieu of a September CAPRA meeting. The full proposal is now being presented formally for your information. The proposed center will provide research, training, and professional support for community and ethnic media outlets in the New York City metropolitan region. The Graduate School of Journalism is committed to helping this sector of journalism raise its professional standards and develop a more robust economic model. The center's activities will be supported by several major private donations.
I think this is just fabulous. Just fabulous. Especially as someone who used to teach journalism at CUNY, which is wonderful.
Okay, so the second information.
Second is the information report by you.
Okay. There are two items that I'd like to update you on today. The first being the academic effects of Hurricane Sandy and also the Pathways Project. First, the academic effects of Hurricane Sandy. There are large differences between how Hurricane Sandy affected our campuses physically and therefore also academically. Some of the campuses, for example, the Graduate Center, had very little effect of the storm, if any, but some, like BMCC, both lost power and had significant water damage. They were really flooded down there. Now, some like York never lost power and had no water damage, but have housed, been housing hundreds, in fact, in York's case, nine hundred, about nine hundred evacuees in their building, in their buildings, many with special medical needs, which in York's case has prevented York from reopening for classes this past Friday, as most of our other campuses did. Every campus lost at least four days of classes, and most, as I said, reopened last Friday, actually Thursday for staff, and then Friday for classes. But York is still not open and will not be open tomorrow either, unfortunately. We're using the reading day, the double Friday exam day, there are two Fridays in exam period, weekends, extra online work, extended class sessions, an extended semester, and other methods to make up the time lost. Each campus is constructing its own plan for making up the time using whatever methods make the most sense for that campus. There are some particular academic needs. For example, the Brookdale site of Hunter College had severe damage, severe water damage and lost power, and I think they still don't have power. And the power is coming to the building, but there was damage to the electrical systems, and so it has not been able to turn on. And there are lab facilities there that are not usable. The campuses have been doing a fantastic job at figuring out how to get running again as soon as possible. I mean, some of the stories are remarkable. For example, I see the BMCC provost back there, they have done a remarkable job at getting started again. And they're also helping each other out a lot. So the Hunter provost, for example, told me that they have had more offers of lab facilities at other campuses to use than they have need for. And she is very, very grateful for this. It's really been absolutely inspirational watching how our campuses have come back from the amount of damage that they have had. And I've been now hearing many things today and on Friday about the joy and exuberance with which people are returning to the campuses and seeing that they have, they are in operation again, they can have classes again, do their research again on campus. And that's a wonderful thing. The Central Office has been providing a lot of information and resources to the campuses. We've been holding many conference calls with campus representatives, one from each campus, both on the administrative side and the academic side, so that we can see what specific campuses need and to help facilitate their communications with each other. Specifically with regard to academic affairs, we've been sending the campuses information about the New York State Education Department minimum course meeting time requirements. Also, information on financial, the financial aid implications of the lost class time, information on possible FEMA reimbursement for additional instructional costs, and information on situations such as students having to withdraw because they've lost their homes. I'm very confident that we will make up all the time lost and while, and at the same time, we will maintain our high academic standards while we do this, this semester. And we will finish the semester in good shape.
What about additional services required by students, such as those who have lost their homes? How will those be addressed?
We are providing additional counseling. We also have a website for students that has all kinds of resources on it. We're also providing that kind of information for faculty and staff who have also had severe impact. We are shelved, we have sheltered close to, as you may know, close to two thousand people on our campuses, and we still have, I believe it's about a thousand. Many hundreds of them have special medical needs, so we also have many medical personnel on our campuses to take care of these people who've been evacuated from nursing homes and hospitals.
Being coordinated by the individual campuses or from Central?
Both, working together. Everybody's working together. And we're in constant touch about these matters. So we do have a particular concern right now about York, because York is the only campus that has not been able to reopen. But they still have, as of, I haven't heard what's happened the past two hours, but as of two hours ago, there were still about nine hundred evacuees being housed on the York campus, and a couple hundred of them have special medical needs. And they're in, some of them are in, being housed in classrooms. So it's not been possible to resume classes there yet.
What about Prince College? I understand some of those from far rockways at Fitzgerald Gym.
Yes. Queens has been housing a lot of people, sheltering a lot of people, but at Queens, apparently, they're in a separate. But at Queens, apparently, they're in a separate area and I believe they're in the gym.
Right, they're in the gym.
So it has been possible to resume classes even so.
Same is true with John Jay.
Yes. I think John Jay's population is now very small. Right.
Well, it's Queensborough.
Kingsborough reopened for meetings today and classes tomorrow. Clean-, Kingsborough has done a remarkable job at cleaning up. Kingsborough, um, was really inundated with water and, um, and destruction from the wind. We do have one particular problem, um, at Kingsborough. One of the buildings, it houses our admissions operations. And that building is not going to be usable without extensive rehab. So we're going to have to move, um, the admissions operations to a different part of the university, which is going to take a little time. So we've got to work out how we can, um, make sure that admissions are not negatively impacted by this. But in general, um, as President Perugia said, um, on one of the conference calls, people come to our campus and they say we're lying about the damage that happened because it's been so cleaned up. And I've seen, I've seen video of, uh, their shoreline there. And horrible, just horrible. But it has been really cleaned up.
On types like this, you look at how, how important CUNY is. If you look at the list of evacuation centers, they are mostly all CUNY facilities, including Chinatown. You know, there's unfortunate Baruch are not that.
Yeah, Baruch was also sheltered.
Yeah.
And Hunter. And, yeah, we had, um, I think it was ten of our campuses had evacuees. Okay. All right. Yeah, um, a brief pathways update. Okay, we continue to make good progress. There have now been about nine hundred courses submitted for review to the Common Core Course Review Committee. This is the university-wide committee that, um, consists of approximately a hundred and twenty faculty that reviews all the potential Common Core courses to ensure that they will meet the learning outcomes that were specified by the Pathway Steering Committee last fall and that were subsequently accepted by the chancellor. We're also making good progress with identifying the first three to six courses leading into each of the eleven largest transfer majors, such as business and psychology. And nursing is another one of them. I should mention nursing, we've had so many nursing programs today. Um, this will, these, um, uh, this initiative will help enable students to start one of these majors at any campus that offers that major and finish it at another campus without losing any credits in their major. We're also continuing to make good progress with setting up the software necessary to schedule the pathways courses and to inform everyone about them. And, uh, lastly, I just wanted to mention that as part of this effort, our communication effort with pathways, we've created a new pathways website that I'm going to show you, uh, now, which is, um, entirely designed for use by students, faculty, and staff to inform them about pathways and, um, to make sure that everybody is knowledgeable when they go to take the courses. And-
If you need to view, you'll have to hook them up to the screen.
Yeah, so, I don't know if, I hope you can see it. I hope I'm not too much in the way. But this is the new website and it's, um, it's simply functional. It's just supposed to serve the function of helping all the different campus constituencies to know, uh, what they're supposed to take and how it all works. So, um, there's some general introduction material over here, which is, um, this is about, it tells you about the general education requirements, how the majors that I was just describing, how credits transfer. Um, it also has, um, let's see, more detailed information about, these are some of the majors that, um, we're identifying the first courses, the entry courses into that major. So a student can go here, or an advisor can go here and see which majors are covered and, um, what the courses are. Uh, we have, um, a section on how the, how credits transfer under pathways. Uh, we have a section on frequently asked questions. Uh, there's a lot of redundancy built into the site so that you keep hitting, um, uh, similar explanations of things to make sure people don't miss that part of the site. Very, also a very important part of the site is contact information for the different campuses because it keeps saying over and over, this is the information that applies to everybody, but every campus has its own special aspects of pathways. And so you must go to your campus website and read there. So, um, if you go here, you'll see that this gives contact information for each campus so that you can go there and, um, find out, and find out exactly what are the requirements for your campus. And one of my favorite parts of the site is the glossary because at CUNY, we use enormous numbers of obscure terms and acronyms. And, uh, this was put together to help people, um, follow all the rest of the site. We're going to keep building on this and just trying to make it, uh, useful for everyone. But I thought you'd like to see it.
So how do we get to it?
Oh, it's supposed to go live tomorrow. This is on a test site right now. But it should go live tomorrow, I believe. I don't think there's anybody here who actually knows. But I believe it's supposed to be tomorrow.
So when you go to www.cuny.edu, they'll be on the screen, "Pathways", and you click on that?
I don't know. I don't know yet how they're, how they're linking.
Navigating, yeah.
Yeah. As you know, there's a lot of stuff on that main page.
Yes, there is.
So it, it may be in the academic affairs section, you know.
Yes.
Um, so, uh, you said, uh, on each campus you have contact information. Does it also include a link where they have, like, each campus, they have their specialized pathways?
Yes.
Or just the contact information?
There's going to be, it's still being built, obviously, but each campus is going to have its own website that's linked to this one. So you can go to that website and it will tell you, you can read there all the special requirements or you can call the, from the contact list. Or email. We also going to have, um, have on here a, um, which we've been continuing, we've had this all along, is a, um, basically a pathways mailbox where you can send any question into the central office.
It's nice and warm in here.
Yes.
It's freezing inside.
Yeah, you'll, you'll-
That's when I came here.
You'll, you'll be glad to go out there after a little while.
Oh, really? I love it.
Okay, so, uh, any other question? Yes?
Uh, how would this apply to the newly, um, the QCC and York dual joint in nursing? Make students complete their associate, will it still apply for them?
Oh, yeah, yes. Well, see, what it is, is the du-, it's, it, that's a good question. The, the, uh, nursing is one of the, uh, one of the majors, um, that, yeah, nursing is one of the majors that is covered by this, but this only covers the first three courses or so. The dual joint program covers the entire program so that that ensures that there's one hundred percent transfer of everything if you're in part of that program. So it actually goes beyond what pathways does.
Okay.
So in effect, new degrees and new programs, uh, associate relating to, to full bachelors, in effect, covers what pathway was already trying to do.
Uh, they will, they will, yes. As they come on, yeah. Uh, right now, all the existing programs are being aligned with this.
Right, but if you have these new ones-
And as new ones, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Do you know other items? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Thank you, everyone. Get home safe. Get ready for Wednesday.